And I was really concerned about heat because my utilities are all down in there. So I was concerned about not, you know, which is all cement, you know, it can be cold and whatever.
I get you, I get you on line.
You ready?
Yep.
Okay, we'll call this meeting to order Monday, December 12th, 2022. Fudge Williams.
Fudge Williams. Just the flag of United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda. So we've got a, want to add the RSU 21 Finance under Committee and Board reports.
Yes.
And I'd like under Business, I'd like to add the, if there is a Proctor Road update.
Yep.
Anything else? Nothing came in today that.
Motion approved as amended.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Jason, seconded by Velma. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All right. Public forum. We don't have anybody out in the public today, so we're going to go to the next item. Approval Minutes, November 28th, 2022.
I didn't see anything, so I will make a motion with approval minutes.
Motion by Velma, seconded by Tom. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Committee and Board reports. Velma.
Okay, the RSU Finance Committee met Thursday, December 8th at eight o'clock at Kennybank Elementary School. And I do have the paperwork here for, for Keith, so we can keep it as part. One of the things they talked about was the fact that they're working on some changes. They're always working on some changes, but this one surprised me. They're working on changes to their bidding amount. They'd like to raise the bidding amount to 50,000. Right now, they're at $5,000. Anything over $5,000, they have to take out to bid. So they had a meeting, they're working on trying to get it raised to 50,000. And one of the questions was, if there was a project, if it was over 50,000, could it be broken into parts to get around that limit? And that was, that was discussed for, for quite a while. And so, and they're also talking about a workshop for all three towns, and they will get together with, with the town managers and see if they can't set something up. And they are looking at a new banking relationship, which of course would need an RFP. They had started out years ago with the bank that was Ocean National Bank, that went to another bank, and another bank, and another bank, and now it's M&amp;T Bank. So they're going, they're looking at setting up an RFP for another one. And they're also looking at a new computer system for HR and payroll.
That's going to be expensive.
Yeah. When we went over the, the budget sheets, there was a question they have under revenues. They had $75,000 that actually was under all other revenues, and that was actually a refund from a prior year. And I didn't get a chance to ask what that refund was for. And then they were talking about system administration. They're actually, that's, somebody asked what that was, and that's the superintendent's office, the business office, HR. All their numbers look, look good. Everything is in order. And down under expenditure by function, they actually had a lower amount in miscellaneous debt, and that was because the MSK came off the books and reduction in the bond payment. So, and I will give this to Keith, so he has those numbers. There's the agenda.
Okay, Velma.
You're welcome.
Managers report.
Yes, I just, I just want to chat a little bit about our next meeting, which is technically scheduled for December 26th, which is our official, the municipality's official recognition, recognizing Christmas. So with no objections, I'd like to move it to Tuesday, the 27th, at our regular meeting at seven o'clock.
Do you think that our agenda is light enough that we can just have a warrant meeting?
Yes. We'll, we're, you know, this last month, the last two months has been very, very light.
Yeah.
It's the end of the year, you know, and it's just, we don't have a lot of activity going on. So, yeah, if you wanted just to have it for for warrants payable and payroll, that would be great.
There's a suggestion on my part, if everybody feels the same way. Something comes up.
Sure.
You need a motion on that, that we meet December 27th at seven o'clock?
Um, I don't think so. I think we'll just move it.
Yep.
Unless I had some strong objections.
Yep.
In your, on your desk this evening, I also provided a municipal corrected amissable char, a municipal charter from the actions that took place on November 8th. So if you, if you go through and see something that doesn't look right, or we missed something, both Simone and I looked at it, so hopefully we got it all. Just let us know, and we'll correct it. The playground area out back is, is progressing okay. The, frankly, the weather has been more disappointing for us than anything else. It would have been nice. It was frozen up a little bit more. But spoke to Roger today, and we've, we've got the depth of 100 feet now. So all we have left now is to get the width of 100 feet. So we finished the 100 by 100 location. He figures that he'll have the brush chipped and maybe the rest of the trees removed hopefully by tomorrow, so we can finish up the grubbing and the placement of the material onto the site. Again, I think I recorded to you last meeting that we'll wait until the spring, early spring, I think, when we'll coordinate with the recreation director to get those folks up here to, to do the install of the playground equipment.
Keith, now that that's all staked out, is it clear about the path, like beyond it? Is, is there enough room to create a road if we had to?
Yes, there is. Yep. Right as you go by, Jason, right between the septic system, where it slopes, and the, in the playground where it starts, there'll be a location right there that we can get through. The Mack truck update, Roger was down two weeks ago, or last week, two weeks, no, last week, beginning of last week. Evidently, he got down there and nobody was there. And then he very quickly got a email that next morning. Definitely, they have security cameras, and they saw that the town of Rundle was seeking out their truck again. So the gentleman owns a company contacted Roger and indicated that the, the frame is in the building. The new box frame is on. They're installing the transmission and engine this week. Although beginning of, of the end of last week, the cab should be going back on the truck sometime beginning of this week, and they're anticipating that we're going to have it by the end of the week. Roger and I don't think that's going to happen, so we may be talking about it at, after the, after the new year. But hopefully we'll get it back and get it in service before we get too far into the weather. I provided to you on your, some pictures of the, the roof work that was done by Zook. The roofing this past weekend. They started on Saturday morning. I came by about eight o'clock on Saturday morning, and the, the roof was completely stripped at that point. And the first course of ice and water shield was placed on the bottom. Then they came back by at about 11 o'clock. And the photographs you see now are but what I saw at noon time. And from what I understand, he wrapped it up Saturday afternoon. He was done with the roof. Sunday, he came in and, and did his final cleanup. And this morning, I think he had some trim, aluminum trim that he had to put back up. And he made one final inspection. I reviewed it too. It looked, it looked great. So I, I thanked Bob on the phone this morning when I spoke to him, that very seamless to get that worked on, so.
You know, they were placed any?
He told me that, that the only place that he observed was on the ridge. I think what Jason was talking about, that we were getting close to getting, getting a new roof, is absolutely correct. Because he said the ridge seemed to have a lot of wear, and there was some water staining on those, on the plywood on each side of the ridge vent, where it looked like it was starting to, you know, seep in a little bit. But nothing structurally was wrong with it. So he just ice and water shielded and says we caught it in a pretty good time. So thanks, Jason, for your, for your insight on that, because I wouldn't have known. I probably would have waited until it started leaking.
That's what everybody does, and then it's too late.
Yeah. Then you're in trouble. So if somebody looks at it and knows what they're looking at, it helps a lot.
Feels good to have a new roof too.
Yeah. It's, it's done, and it's gonna, it's gonna serve the town for a lot of years, that's for sure. I think the warranty he said was 35 on a commercial. And if it was residential, it's 45. I don't know what the 10-year difference is, but 35 years, we may not all be sitting here, so somebody else can deal with it.
You do? Okay.
Good.
Oh, you'll be on that plaque.
Just to let you know, the Eastern Trail had approached us, I think, early in the late summer about some fencing that had to be repaired or replaced on the, a Rundle section of the, of the trail. They applied for a grant and received a substantial amount of money to do that, but not enough to complete the work. So we had some savings left in our maintenance budget from the, from the trail maintenance. And so we combined that with their money, and we're going to be able to do, I think, 28 sections of, of fencing that needs to be repaired. So from what I, speaking to Roger today, I think they're anticipating doing that sometime this week. They have a fencing company coming in to, to tackle that, so hopefully they'll wrap it up before we get a lot of substantial snow out in the ground. But our, our efforts this year on the Eastern Trail with, was the fence. And then if you recall, I don't know if you recall this, but in the spring, we were getting complaints because the, the material that we put on the trail was soft. And what it was, was it was a very dry season or dry week, and when we put it down, it was, wasn't wet yet, and it's stone dust. Need some water to it in order to pack in. So it was ironic that through the, through the year, well, through the week, we started out with complaints that it was soft, and their bikes were squirreling through it. And then at the end of the week, I was getting praised that it, it was so nice. It was nice and hard now, and really appreciate all your efforts. So I guess it depends on what time of the week we're, we're getting praised or getting rejected. But anyway, that will, that will be done here soon. I don't know if you've noticed, but the the GIS system that we have for Rundle is up and running now. It's on our website in various locations. And this, this is a very, it's a very good tool. I've been trying to play with it a little bit to understand it a little bit more. But if you bring this GIS system up, you can get a tax card. You can reference the tax card to Vision, but you can also reference a tax card that CIA also develops as part of the, the website that we purchased, or the material that we purchased. In addition, they have our zoning colored locations on the map. They have the survey of the lot on the map. You get contours, you get wetland delineation, you get setbacks, you get a butters list. So, so really, anybody who's looking for information and can work their way around the, the system can really sit at their, their office and pick up all this information, which is very valuable, I think, for businesses and appraisers and people looking to make sure that they, you know, the right information is there. So I don't think we're getting, I haven't heard many people participating in it yet. But our hope is that, that it will, it will resonate with, with folks as they start to maneuver through it, but.
I played a role in this. The only thing that I have struggled with is when I brought up the soil, is I was looking for, for legend, to see, you know, what all of that. And I don't remember if I found it there, or if I had to go on Google and Google.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's a nice tool, and I'm, I'm happy we have it, and it'll be with us for a while now, so. Just another thing for people to, to use, I guess. That's all I have for Managers' Report tonight.
Onto business, we have a liquor license renewal for the Andrew restaurant.
Yes. The chairman's got the, the liquor license. It's been reviewed. Came in, I think, last week. It's a renewal, so that's why we haven't had any public hearing notice on it, which would be required if it was a new liquor license.
Liquor license for Andrew. By Velma.
Second.
By Jason. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
That's true.
All right, next item on the agenda is approval of the table and table warrants. By Jason. Sent in by Velma. Hey, Bob. Right on the ball. Give that, I'm sleeping. All right, and then last item is Mr. Managers, give us an update on the Proctor.
Sure. I had a conversation with Attorney Plant, who's been advising us on the, on that property down there. Indicated to him that we have had no contact with the owner. He suggested that because of no contact, that we take two steps. And the first step would be to send a certified letter to them indicating within the letter that we would like to visit the property and give them a date certain to, to complete that. If they do not meet our deadline, that we go ahead and proceed with administrative inspection warrant, that we have to get through the court. And that, just to keep him in the loop, and he advised me, if we get to that point, that we need to go through the, the warrant. So the certified letter has been sent. I've, I've given them until the 27th, which would be your next business meeting on Tuesday, to at least respond to us. Now, if they don't respond, then we'll move forward with the administrative inspection warrant. I could tell you that they are living in the home. Don't know the conditions of the home. But they're there. I went by again today just to confirm that. Obviously, they're there. So. I saw a 20-pound propane container on the front steps that I'm, I'm suspecting that they probably are using some sort of propane space heaters inside. Just they were, not sure.
That warrant, what, does that allow?
Yes. Yep. Then we'll all be able to get in. We'll all be able to provide a report. I think the initial thing right now is that, you know, obviously, the, the photographs that they shared with us said that they cleaned it. We'd like to confirm that they did, and then take an inspection of the property to ensure that it's livable. Provide a report, and then we'll have to take some action at that point as to how we're going to proceed. But that was his suggestion. I thought it was a good one, and obviously gives us the legal framework that we need to move forward. If they refuse the acceptance, good idea. Okay. Okay. Yep, that's, I sent one non-certified. And obviously, we send the certified, but yeah, we can have the deputy swing by and drop one off. That'll work out too, and he can report back to us then. Good. Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, for our meeting on the 27th, if you just have any other answers on it.
Sure. Yep. And I can report to you very quickly whether or not they've contacted us. And if they have, I'm hoping they, they see, yeah, come on in. And then, as like Jason said, we'll get fire code, structural engineer, and whoever all the parties, we need to go on. I think that'll be enough to really take a look at the property.
I know he's talking about.
Yep. It's not a bad idea. Okay.
Why don't we have the people building homes? James doesn't go, homeowner doesn't do.
No, doesn't have to do, doesn't have to do residential inspections. It's not required. No, it's not required by, I don't think it's, I don't think it's required, is it? No. Correct. Right. And then as a homeowner, you can do your own electrical work. So same thing with plumbing too.
Yes. Sorry. First of all, have you heard anything about the fence on the River Road?
Nope. I went by, looked at it again today. It's still in the location that it was. Haven't heard anything from them. Roger and I spoke about it again today. I'm, I'm reluctant to spend town money in order to get it removed at this point. I mean, we have no liability to it if it gets destroyed.
But weren't they supposed to come back with?
There, we, I gave them a liability release, but they never signed it, never returned it.
So they know that in writing that we have no liability.
Correct. Plus, the state indicates that through the statute, there's no liability for that. But I was hopeful that they would be gentleman about it, but no, it doesn't seem that happens very often lately. No, even if a car hits it, it's no obligation to us at all. It'll be the homeowner's responsibility and that of the insurance company, and they'll have to flush it out, but. Yeah, but I'm hoping it doesn't get destroyed over the winter, and that we can then have approach that conversation with them again when the weather's better and get that moved. It'll be to their benefit. I mean, they spent enough money on it. You would think they'd want to save it. Where it is, it's not going to survive. I can tell you that on that corner.
Yeah, but they may think that the placement of, there are two mailboxes. There's one right about where the fence starts, and another one right about where the fence ends. They may be hoping that, that the snowplow not wanting to hit those mailboxes, that they might miss their fence. But if you've got a big, heavy wet snowstorm, that's going to go right against that fence.
Yeah, it, yeah, I don't think it's going to, you know, it's not going to be a benefit to them, that's for sure.
I have one more. I was having breakfast this morning, and there was, sitting at the table next to us, three people with jackets on that said, "Holy Donut." So being the bashful, shy person that I am, I went over and asked them if they did in fact work for Holy Donut. Yes, they did. They should be opening about the middle of January. Their drive-through is going to be where the ice cream place used to be. They're using the building that used to be the restaurant as a commissary, where they're making donuts for a lot of locations. And they're using the house for offices and storage. So, so we'll be watching for that.
It won't be long now.
Yep.
Good.
Yep, that's it.
Happy holidays.
Yeah. We're having a little, we're having a little Christmas get-together here on Thursday. If any of you out and about, come on by. Well, we're going to be setting up in here. We've got some catered stuff from Above and Beyond Catering out of, out of, I think they're Alfred. And then people have signed up for different dishes. They're bringing in, so.
This Thursday?
This Thursday.
What time?
Uh, we're going to start at noon time. Yep, so if you're kicking around. I, I've got alcohol in my office for you, if you.
Wait a minute, let me turn this off.
You know, it, it's, I'm happy you brought that up, because I, it's working out extremely well. They're, they're really catching on. I know that Sherry and Diana have been taking care of the registrations extremely well. Rachel has been focusing on, with Simone, to try to get, obviously, the, the voting stuff. That whole reporting thing, which is a nightmare, is probably, Jason, you know. I'm sure that Emily came over a few times to talk about it. The Kennybank Post reached out to me last week and wanted to interview Rachel for a small story. They'll be doing that tomorrow at around two o'clock. So I'm sure there'll be something in the paper about her being our new town clerk and so forth. So right now, it seems to be working out really well. I'm very pleased with the, with the efforts of everybody. right now, it seems to be working out really well. I'm very pleased with the, with the efforts of everybody.